Public hearing to order. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum today. We have Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, Mr. Andrew Gonzalez, Mr. Lasmo Lopez, Coach Armando Cuellar, and myself, Mr. Nieto. Item number three, public hearing on proposed 2019-2020 budget and tax rate. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, Mr. Andres Sanchez will be taking us through this agenda item.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. Nieto, members of the board. This is the public hearing, the final presentation on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. After the public hearing, this special meeting, as you all know, what is an agenda item to approve the budget and the tax rate which are related to this presentation. I'm going to try to cover some of the items have been here for a while, so I don't want to go over them, but there's some that I need to emphasize, and I will cover them as I go through. On page two. The budget's property tax revenues are based on the 2019 certified net taxable property values received from the appraisal district. The values are $2,409,136,097. Compared to last year, they are 106 million higher. That represents 4.6% increase. The bullet at the bottom, it mentioned that House Bill 3, that was passed by the 86 legislature, has a restriction that in the future, any property value increases are limited to 2.5. So assuming the value were to increase again 4.6 for next year, all we can use as an increase is 2.5% of the increase to calculate a tax revenue. Slide three, school district property values and funding lag. In the past, TEA was using the controller values for all the school districts for the year before because, for example, the county sends them to us in July, then they go to the state controllers, they analyze in January, they finalize their numbers, and they provide them to TA. Eventually, they get certified by TA, and the state controller uses them. So it's half a year that it takes, so it's always a year behind. But when school districts have property value decreases, there were some effect that were affecting the school districts. So what they did is change the requirement that from now on, TA will use the property values for the same year. Instead of going to the year before, they're going to use the current year. So there will not be that difference. I'm going to go to the bullets to read this. This information is used in the first indicators, so I'm going to cover it because I need to mention it because of the first indicators. The second bullet, use the school districts prior year property values does not fully reflect the property values decline that may be experienced by some school districts. When TA calculates the foundation school payment, foundation school program payments during the fiscal year, the agency is required to assume the same estimate property values increase in property values for all school districts. So they're assuming it stays the same, and if they went down, they don't know, or they wouldn't know. So school districts with declining property values may experience significant underpayments, creating what is called a funding lag. The funding lag may negatively impact cash flows and overall funding levels for some school districts. So beginning with the 2019-2020 fiscal year, the state revenue funds for school districts will be calculated based on the state controller certified property values for the current year. Do you have any questions on that?
And our district, are we considered declining property values, Andres?
No.
Well, it just, no, in our case, no. That's for the one going down, we usually going up.
Right, so not necessarily here in West School.
Right.
Other school districts, Mike?
Right, because when schools, I mentioned before that the state funding, when their local property values, their local school effort on tax collection goes up, the state funding goes down. So if TA assumed that the values for the school districts stay high, and they're actually low, they're going to collect low taxes, so they're supposed to get more money from the state. But if they use the high values, they're not going to give us money. So those that have decreasing values would be affected negatively.
Okay.
That's part of the change that affected the average amount that got changed by the legislature.
Okay, thanks.
The budget is based on ADA of 15,751, which is what we had mentioned through the first or the all six weeks of the school year. These do not include the SASI gain that we had in the summer, so it's 15,751.
Okay.
The tax rate that the budget is based on is for the local maintenance and operations, MNO, $1.0487. The INS is $0.02 for a total of $1.0687, 0.0687 cents. That is about 8 cents less than, 8 and 1/2 cents less than last year. The state compared the tax rates to help the taxpayer, that was one of the things they did on the legislature, to help their property, the owners, so they reduced them like that. The lower rates I had mentioned before would generate approximately 1.9 million less in current property tax revenues, but again, when you have less property revenue, the state will give us more money to us. So that's what's made up. The current tax collections, this year, we budgeted at 92%. In the past, we always use 91, but we budgeted them at 92%. The goal is 94%. The actual collections of current revenues right now on taxes is 94.77%, and it's been like that for the last four or five years.
So I'm assuming that we met our goal for this year?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Delinquent tax collections are budgeted at 20%. The goal is 27%. As of July 31, we were at 24.86%, so we had exceeded the budget as well. The House Bill 3 provided new or increased state funding allowances for several programs. The following programs had additional funds provided and the calculation they did, vocational CTE, special aid, capacity education, and bilingual education. There's some new funding that we didn't have before. The dyslexia, we got $244,552. The early education allotment, we got two, almost 2.5 million dollars for that. That is generated by the kinder through third grade ADA, and we can use it for full day pre-K, as well as initiatives for kinder to third grade initiative to improve reading and math.
Okay.
On safety and security, we got $153,100, also new funding. We have the career college military readiness, the CCMR. We got $282,000, of which 55% had to be spent on the program. And then we have some money for drop-up recovery, school and residential placement facility allotment, that's only $20,653. House Bill 3 did not provide funds for gifted and talented or high school allotment programs, but we have to maintain the same funding we did last year, and we included the same amount we budgeted last year in, for those programs.
So Dr. Canales, with the CCMR, the additional funds, what are you going to use that for?
Well, some of that, it's going to be in the budget, some of it is to support some of the high school allotment.
Okay.
So we'll be working, evaluating, because TA is releasing the requirements very slowly.
Correct.
So we're still working through that.
Okay.
The schools, I had mentioned the basic allocation. Elementary school got $120 per ADA, based on the prior year ADA. Middle school is 135, and high school 200. I had mentioned that at the end, when we finish with the payroll, the pay raises, we'll try to see if we could provide more funds. But after we look at the budget, including the pay raises approved by the board, the vacancies that we have that are included in the budget, and contingencies in every function, which will help schools in the province throughout the year, we did not have additional funds to provide to the schools, so we did not provide any additional funds. But we have some contingencies that we all mentioned at the end, that throughout the year, with the schools or the province needs funds, we'll work with them to help them. That way, we don't have to bring so many amendments to the board and changes and stuff like that. The budget includes locations for band, we've done all the time band, and for high school middle schools and the choir. Fine arts, they're all included in the budget. There's even money for band instruments of $50,000 for each high school band.
And the budget is earmarked for each individual school, like middle school band?
Yes, yeah, but enrollment they have, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have it for everybody. We work with the band directors on that, so everybody's accounted for. Health insurance, through July 31, based on the activity through July 31, we estimate that the deficit will be actually about 2.5 million dollars. I had mentioned before that it was 1.5, 2, we think it's going to be about 2.5 million dollars. So that deficit will have to be covered from the fund balance assigned for facilities for all the needs. And I have a report that has information for that that I will give you later. The board also approved the increase of the contribution to the health insurance program for employees and for the district. The next two pages is the contribution for the district and for employees in the various categories and the three plans that we have, law, high, and state. We've gone over that, so I'm not going to cover those. Employee compensation, House Bill 3, with the changes in the law, they approved that for every, 30% of the total gain in state funds obtained for fiscal year 2019-2020, comparing the current funding formulas and the recently approved House Bill 3 formulas, must be used to calculate for mandated employee compensation, gross pay, and fringe benefits. 75% of that amount has to be used for classroom teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses, prioritizing differentiated compensation for classroom teachers with more than five years of experience. And the remaining 25% was to be used for compensation increases for full-time employees other than administrators under chairman by the district. That was what the law was, and as you all know, we went over that with you. You provide compensation for everybody, the amount required by the state, the additional funds for local funds.
Correct.
That you approved, and those are on page 12, where the board approved the amounts for teachers, which are $3,400 for one to five years of experience, $3,600, six to 12 years, $3,800, 13 to 19 years of experience, and $4,000 for 20 years or more. For the professional staff, manual trades, technical trades, bus drivers, they got a 7% raise from the midpoint for employee category. And administrators, you all approve a 5% pay raise. The total amount for pay raises, including fringe benefits, is $8,283,167. For next year, we will keep the same compensation, where we're not looking at pay raises for next year. We had discussed that with the board before.
So repeat that again?
For next year, we're looking at keeping the same pay.
Okay.
With a higher amount, but there won't be additional pay raises for next year. If the legislature changes the next year, and it's going to be difficult because it's going to be based to the allotment that we get from the state. If it changes, there's an additional amount to be provided.
Okay.
But other than that, we'll remain with the same compensation. The next chart on page 13 is average pay raises.
Andres, just to clarify though, on the pay raises.
Sure.
They still get their step though, right? Or is it frozen?
No, it will be the same amount.
Same amount, okay.
Page 13 showed the average pay raises for employees in the paraprofessional, manual trades, and technical trades, and bus driver categories. Page 14, the budget does include two additional resource officers that we're working with, with the city of West School, for a total of eight resource officers. We had six already in the budget for last year to help us with safety and security of students and staff. We have no transfer to the construction fund for facilities out of the budget, and I have another teaching retirement system, and I'll try to make a brief explanation. Again, with the House Bill 3, there was some communication to school districts in late June, early July, the TRS saying, I know the, we know the legislature's barely approving the pay raises, school districts, the board will have a hard time approving raises, they're going to be trying to rush to do it, but you need to know that in order for the compensation of the employees to be recognized in a record TRS for retirement purposes, whatever compensation is paid for the month is the only compensation that is going to be recognized that month. And to clarify that, we will, my country, for example, begins July. Some school contracts begin in August. So in September, the board would approve in August the pay raises, this time was July 29. So in September, we'll get a pay raises for the new budget, and we'll do a retroactive pay raise for July and August in the September check. Then October through June, we'll continue with the amount that should be per month. So TRS said, any retroactive compensation will not be eligible for retirement benefits, will not count. We'll receive the pay compensation, the pay raise value will not count. So we tried, we looked for.
So those two months won't go to your TRS?
That's what they're saying.
Because our fiscal year starts.
Only the raise part.
Only the raise part, yeah.
Only the raise part, so.
Because it didn't get paid. It's supposed to be paid. We checked with Ivan on it, we checked with all the school districts, and everybody's continuing with that, because it's all, they're all being like that, and TRS always allowed it. But this time, I guess because the amount would be bigger with the extra compensation, they say it's going to be a lot of amount going to TRS to qualify.
So moving forward.
Correct. The change has to be in the fiscal year?
Yes, like, let's say that we were to have pay raises next year, we're, from now we're looking at no pay raises, for the board to approve them in June, so that the July page will reflect them already in August.
Or look into having this fiscal year start July 1st, something we can look, plan for this year.
That would take care of that, right. It would be planned like that.
Something that Dr. Canales can look into for this coming year.
Takes a lot of work to change it, but yes, that would be an option, yes, sir.
One of your notes says there's no transfer of construction funds for facility projects.
Yes.
That for this year. How much do you have still in reserves for construction projects right now?
Right now, for the fund balance assigned for facilities for all the needs, I had mentioned before, right now, there's 12 million, and we're looking for the board to approve a transfer of 2 million to the local maintenance fund, to the debt service fund for payment on bonds for next year. We are allocating 1,200,000 for computers and projectors. And then there's two facility projects that we haven't touched on, which are the parking improvements district-wide, we had half a million dollars allocated for that, and the district digital billboard 260,000. So taking those amounts aside, the amount goes down to 8.2 million dollars.
For facilities?
Yes, facilities for all the needs. So I mentioned earlier about the deficit and the health insurance fund. If we transfer 2.5 million dollars for that, the amount will go down to 5.7. Then there's another amount that I was estimating here that we might allocate, and we're looking, based on the final amended budget that we have at the meeting to be presented, about a 4.5 million dollar surplus in the budget, which we expect it to be higher, but putting that amount will leave us about 7 million dollars for fund balance for facilities for all the needs, plus any additional surplus that we get while we finalize the audit, for example.
Okay. So basically, you're telling me you're going to have about 7.5 million dollars for construction?
That could be, yes, for construction or all the needs, yeah.
Which is unassigned, right?
Yes, right.
And the reason I say that is because I know we've been talking about roofs, and roofs, and roofs. And we need to make sure that we don't let the time go by, because I mean, you will use up that money if you don't assign it.
Yes.
For roofs, and I know that by having our roofs leaking, it's just costing us money by having to send men to replace ceiling tiles, their time, and whatever else gets ruined or destroyed due to the rains. So we need to make sure we do something with that.
We'll discuss it with Dr. Canales and Coach Johas on that. There are 49 vacancies listed, included in the budget, and they are all listed here. We have six CTE teachers, two for the high schools, four for the middle schools, one speech pathologist for special aid, four dyslexia teachers, one theater arts teacher, eight custodian staff, nine maintenance staff, two security guards, 13 instructional aides for the full day pre-K program as mandated by House Bill 3, cafe manager for the lead for literacy cafe to be used at the library, there will be a paraprofessional position, human resources compensation analyst, human resources staffing specialist, and a human resources receptionist, and a bookkeeper for the business office. All these vacancies are listed in, included in the budget.
Besides the paraprofessional for the cafe, any other professionals listed on here? Or the rest professional?
Say it again?
Is the rest of, like, the human resource compensation analyst, is that professional or is that a?
The first two are professional.
Okay.
The third one is a paraprofessional.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
And also the instructional aides.
And instructional aides, yeah, okay.
And the bookkeeper business office also a paraprofessional position.
Right.
And you short 13 of those?
Say it again?
Or you're?
We'll be, we'll be monitoring the numbers as they come in on a day by day this week.
Okay. Go ahead, Andres, continue.
Okay. The next slide shows the contingency account that I had mentioned to you earlier. We have almost 1.7 million dollars in contingency accounts. The instruction account, function 11 for instructional, is 780,000. We have money allocated for function 12 for media services, libraries, 13 for startup development, 45,000, structural administration, which is curriculum instruction, 20,000, campus administration, 20,000, counseling, 20,000, social services, 20,000, health, 40,000, the blood control kit that are required by law to provide our school to promise, we're going to get them out of this account. Transportation, we don't have a contingency account. Food service, we don't have a contingency account, curricular, extracurricular, 300,000. General administration, 205,000. 150,000 from these is for advertising. We had it put in that department, that's what we lifted in the contingency account that we had last year. Maintenance and operations, 100,000. Safety and security, 25,000, data processing, 25,000, ancillary services, 30, and the total is 1,680,575.
So Andres, what's the difference between general administration of 205,000 and 21 and 23, which is your regular administration?
Yeah, 23 is campus administration, the principals.
Right, I know that, but.
And 21 is curriculum and instruction.
Correct. So general administration is what?
Us, superintendent, business office, human resources, risk management.
Okay.
Mr. Sanchez, why, for transportation, why wouldn't we have a?
Because usually, we added 300,000 to buy buses in their budget. We added funds also for payroll, because we had to add a lot of payroll last year, so we already included that, so they are in the department. These contingency accounts are, have our organization code on 999, so nobody can touch it. We control those. When they need it, they come to us, and then we allocate it. But transportation got additional funds for payroll and 300,000 for buses.
So we placed it in the budget?
Yes, those are in the budget already. That's why they're not continued separate.
Okay. Andres, one thing, how about, do you have money set aside in the budget somewhere for whatever needs to happen to Roosevelt to get those departments in there?
Fund balance assigned for facilities for all the needs.
So you do?
From the 7 million that I mentioned earlier.
It's in the big pot.
It shouldn't be a lot of, a lot of money for that.
You had mentioned.
Food service is moving in, and they're not going to do any rearranging of the building for their needs.
She's just reminding, a kitchen is 50,000 dollars, though.
Oh, there's not kitchen, there's, they're going to the classrooms.
I know.
If needed, yes, but right now, for example, that department, they're not going to do any modification to the building.
Okay. When will that move happen, Doctor?
We're going to, we're going to start with one department at a time. The team, we're working on getting a letter out to staff and to parents. The plan is to start with food services, and sometime next week, we've had the conversation with them, that's the building most in need in terms of staff needing a different place. And then we'll slowly, there's two other departments that were, that we talked about, special education, and the other one was library services.
Will they get to choose what they want, first come, first served? Or has their areas already been designated?
There's areas that were recommended by, who was here, Robert, Mr. Sands was here at one of the last meetings, and he did lay out how many, depending on his inspection of their sites, and talking to the directors about the different spaces that we could use, and he identified sections of building A that could be used by special education versus food services versus library services. So all that has been figured out by the people helping us with the facilities assessment.
Okay. I just want to make sure that somebody's got, working on that, because I don't want to, well, we should have been over here, and they're already there, well, let's move them around, and we can put just one time.
And I believe staff has been, staff has been involved, directors have been involved in that, correct, Coach Reyes?
Yes, ma'am. So to answer the question, we haven't visited too much the library services or special needs programs. We're concentrating on food services right now. The sections that have been designated for them were assigned, or what's the word I'm looking for, recommended by ERO, and they recommend based on what the needs are of the apartment, how much traffic they get, the load, the unloading of equipment, materials, things of that nature. And so all of those things were taken into consideration when they decided to assign them the rooms that they did.
Location.
Location, yes, sir. And like Dr. Canales said, we do have a plan to start already on Monday with food services. This week, we met last week with all departments that have a, you know, something to do to help us get the move done, and we, we're already starting to clean up, and basically, we need to add some coal base to the room. The rooms are completely climate controlled, everything is good in that area. We're going to wax the floors, and we've met with Ms. Dora with food services, and she is excited, and she's starting to pack, and warehouse will start the process next week.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Oye, Mikey. Excuse me, Mike, I shouldn't have said that oye thing. Mike, insurance coverage and everything's good on the building we're going to be using, or we're not going to be governed?
We still have separate national flood insurance policies on those buildings, so we're okay.
We're okay, all right. That's it, thank you.
The next slide, page 17, is the debt service fund, also known as interest and sinking fund. This is the fund that pays the bonds that we get. If you look at the chart, the beginning, at the end of the year, right now, we're looking at 1,71,436 dollars available. And like I mentioned earlier, we have an agenda item for the board to approve a transfer of 2 million from the local maintenance fund to that fund. So after the transfer, we'll have 3,71,436 to start the year next year. Then adding the revenues of 481,000, the money from the states and IFA, 600, almost 13,000, and interest investment income from the money, we'll have 4.2 million dollars available to pay bonds. The payment on bonds is 3,956,025 dollars, so we're looking at having about 250,000 dollars available at the end of next year from the fund balance for the debt service We, last week, we, Dr. Canales, Segura, and I went to visit with Dr. Rivera to discuss the presentation, the budget, the other works that I sent the board, so he felt comfortable with it, so.
Both Dr. Rivera and Mr. Cuellar are on the board president-appointed budget committee, so we all submit with Mr. Cuellar on Thursday.
We met with three of them last week to discuss it. In the, do you have a booklet there? I'm not going to go over the booklet, but there's a page like this. This is the summary page of the budget.
Is there a page number?
It's on page one, third page one, but it's, I guess, the first page after the thick cover in the booklet.
So it's this page one?
It's that one, right. This is the summary budget that you'll be approving during the meeting. The approval is for the general fund and the debt service funds. The special revenue, those are the federal programs, state grants, and the capital projects are only for information purposes, those do not get approved. The general fund and debt service fund. And this is the, the balance, the budget for general fund is balanced, we have the same amount of revenues and expenditures, 183,844,750. The debt service is not balanced, because we're paying the bond from the fund balance that we have, which we're going to have about 3,71,000, like I just mentioned a while ago. The fund balance that we have right now and the transfer of 2 million, we'll have money available to pay next year. Do you have any questions?
Dr. Canales, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Going back to the vacancies, the pre-K vacancies, as soon as you decide they're needed, or some of them are needed, how, how quick do they get put in place? You know, is there, are they already?
Do you have substitutes?
Yes. You're talking about to get the, you currently have substitutes, but you're talking about how long, as soon as they become, we determine, yes, we need them. How long is a turnaround to hire somebody?
Correct.
About how long?
And so we intend to post right away tomorrow with your approval tonight, require 10 days, and after that, they can immediately start interviewing. We listed 13 because we currently already have some pre-K aides that are funded through some of the other special funds that we're going to straighten out to make sure everybody's consistent with the funding, that way we can account for all pre-K services. So within the 10-day posting time, we can iron out all of those details and get them on board right away. So right now, we have the substitutes assigned for at least the next two weeks to make sure that we've got the help we need.
Okay. And that includes having a background check on them also, right?
Yes, sir, definitely.
Application, the whole process.
Fingerprinting, yes, fingerprinting is what takes a little bit longer.
Right.
So if we've got some of those situations, we will extend the sub, who will not release until we have that new person coming in.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Patrick?
No questions.
Any questions? Mr. Lopez?
Yes, Andres, in one of your reports here, said we lost 1.9 million dollars.
Yes, Andres, in one of your reports here, say we lost one point nine million dollars in tax collection, is that correct?
No, no, what I said is because the taxes were, are lower, we will collect about one point and less property taxes next year.
Next year.
So we're not gonna, next year?
Yes, for the nineteen-twenty, we'll collect less. We collected a lot more this year.
And how is that gonna hurt you or...
Well, it's gonna be less local funds, but the state's making it up with the money that they provided for us. With all the formulas altogether, we ended up getting more money.
At this point, for this budget that we're approving, there's no surprises, you're not, we're not gonna fund something that we funded in the past, you're not taking anything away or funding at a lower level?
No.
Everything's...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have the contingency there. Anything that we missed or whatever reason that we didn't think about it, we will address it through the contingency account that we have.
And that's why you allocated funds for the contingency?
Yes. They always come up with, schools want a budget amendment for a thousand dollars, five hundred dollars, we just give it to them from there, so we don't have to bring them.
Correct. Coach Cuellar? Any comments? Alright. Item number four, public comments on proposed twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty budget and tax rate. If anybody would like to comment in the audience?
I'd like to have one more comment.
You have one more comment?
We advertised a public hearing ten days ago.
Okay.
On Friday, the sixteen. We're required to advertise it at least ten days before the, it was advertised in the monitor.
Okay.
So we comply with that part.
Alright.
Well, good job, Andres. Este, I know it's a lot of work trying, getting all this information, all these numbers put together and making them work and making them balance out. So you and your staff, I wanna...
It was a team effort, technology, human resources and business office.
All of you guys. Congratulations and thank you all so much for doing, doing a good job on that.
And, and Mr. Lopez has a good point on facilities. I think it's important that we continue to fund for our facilities, cause there's a lot of approvals that we need and Mr. Lopez hit them right there where he was talking about that.
Yeah.
Point is the final report done by ERO on our facilities, long-term.
We're looking, was it October, Coach? We're still looking October deadline for the...
Cause I know it rained last night and the few of the principals that I was able to visit with shared, you know, still has some leaks and it's usually the same rooms that, that is happening, so hopefully the sooner the better with that report.
Alright, any more comments, questions? Alright, thank you, Andres. Yes, good job. The German? Six fifteen. Alright, ready to start the regular board meeting? On my left, or anybody need to take a break? Okay?
Okay.
Alright. It is six sixteen and I call this meeting at six fifteen. Let me establish a small quorum. We got Mr. Patrick Kennedy, Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, Mr. Andrew Gonzalez, Mr. Erasmo Lopez, Coach Armando Cuellar and Mr. Nieto here, present today. So we have a quorum. Item number three, discussion and possible action for the board to consider transferring surplus funds from the district's general fund to the debt service fund. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we are recommending that you find that there exists surplus funds in the district's general fund, fund one ninety-nine, in the amount of two million, not otherwise designated for a specific purpose, which are available to be transferred to the district's debt service fund, fund five ninety-nine, in order to pay debt service obligations arising in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget year as permitted by section forty-five point one zero five C of the Texas Education Code and accordingly to authorize a transfer in the amount of two million to be made from fund one ninety-nine to fund five ninety-nine effective August twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. Further, the board determines that the paying the debt service on existing school district bonds is a purpose necessary in the conduct of the school district.
I'll move to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime and a second by Mr. Gonzalez to consider transferring surplus funds from the district general fund to the debt service fund. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the final amended budgets for the general fund and debt service fund for the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, school year. Dr. Canales.
I'm gonna cover some points on this and then Mr. Sanchez, if you'll fill in. So the amended local maintenance fund budget shows an increase of one million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand in local revenues in the general fund, an increase of the state foundation and state T R S on behalf revenues in the general fund of three million, three hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and sixty-four, an increase of six hundred and thirteen, nine hundred in federal revenues related to the indirect costs from federal grants and SARS, an increase of one million, fifty-eight thousand in budget expenditures in various functions. As a precautionary measure, we are conservatively projecting a net budget surplus of four million, four hundred and eighty-three, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. We will have an additional budget surplus amount once the fiscal year is closed, all qualifying invoices are paid and all final adjustments are posted in the records. The twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen fiscal and compliance audit will reveal the true budget surplus. The amended debt service fund budget shows a transfer in from the general fund, local maintenance fund of surplus funds in the amount of two million for the payment of bond debt. Mr. Sanchez is here to answer any specific questions you may have.
I move to approve the final amended budgets. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Dr. Jaime to approve the final amended budget for the general fund and debt service fund for the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, school year. Discussion, any discussion?
I just wanna say thank you to Andres and staff and all those involved in balancing this budget. We had a workshop just earlier and before this meeting started and it's been explained and, and the public was allowed to speak and ask questions on the budget, on the upcoming budget. So Andres, thank you for doing a, spearheading this budget for next year and getting us in good shape.
Any discussion on my left side? Alright.
And, and this budget is for the current year. You know, we have the other one coming up, you know, separate agenda item.
Yes.
But we went through the same process, going to make sure we covered everything. We put money in functions just to make sure we didn't miss anything, cause if we get written up, we won't get our first indicators, well.
We'll get our head.
Example record, so, wanna make sure.
Alright. We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Dr. Jaime. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, discussion of possible action for the board to consider approval of the Wesco ISD compensation plan for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, just recommending that you improve, that you approve, not improve, approve the compensation plan for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Staff has been working on this for some time. Mrs. Segura works with different staff members as we take a look at this. We do have a highlighted page for you at the end, on page thirty-six, that summarizes some of the changes in the compensation plan. So we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
I move to approve the compensation plan for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Gonzalez to approve the Wesco ISD compensation plan for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Any discussion on my left side? Any discussion, Mr. Lopez or Coach Cuellar?
No. I would like to, I would just like to say that, thank of course the state for allowing us or giving us the flex to, to be able to give our employees such a good raise that well deserved by, by our staff and all our, all our teachers and all our employees and at the same time, challenge everybody to, to bring our students back, get our students in and, and to do their best. If there's a, there's a child out there, a neighbor, a student that somebody knows of, bring him back. I mean, that's, that's really how we can maintain the, the same, for lack of a better word, lifestyle, the same, you know, keep our, our school growing. And, and if we get stagnant, then we're in trouble. I mean, that happens in every, every society. Our population has to be growing to be successful. And I would like to challenge all our employees, our staff and our teachers to, to get our numbers up higher. That's it, thank you. Thank you for all you've done and, and you all deserve the compensation that you all got.
And again, a couple of comments there. Mr. Lopez, thank you for those comments. Also, with the pay raises come expectations for all principals and all teachers. We did very well this year. Hopefully next year we can say we did outstanding, but we're continuing to improve in every area. There's some areas that we'll have to improve on, but overall, every school did very well this year. Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all, to adopt the, no, to approve the Wesco ISD compensation plan for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to adopt the district's general fund and debt service fund budget for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we are recommending that you adopt the district's general fund and debt service fund budgets for the, this fiscal year as presented. It is a balanced budget. General fund, projected revenues is, Andres, do you wanna go? You're up there, you can do it.
Okay, yeah, the general fund, the projected revenues are budgeted at one hundred and eighty-three million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And projected expenditure, the same amount, one hundred and eighty-three million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The debt service, as I mentioned earlier, is not balanced because we use the money from fund balance, but it's allowed to, to do it like that. And we gave you the booklet there, I gave you a revised agenda item, which included the page that I showed you earlier, which is the one that's getting approved. The budget approved at the function level, that is what the board approves, which is function eleven, for example, and the general fund at ninety-eight million, one hundred and three thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. Then every function like that, the amounts are listed there. The total is the amount they mentioned, one hundred and eighty-three million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the debt service is also listed as well. The other fund, like I mentioned earlier, they're just for information purposes and the approval for the budget's only on the general fund and the debt service fund.
I move to approve the budget for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Kennedy and a second by Dr. Jaime to adopt the general fund and debt service fund budgets for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion of possible action for the board to consider approval of a resolution adopting the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty total tax rate of one oh six eighty-seven on each a hundred dollars of assessed tax, taxable property value with a maintenance operations M and O tax rate of one oh four eighty-seven and an interest and sinking INS tax rate of point zero two. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we are recommending that you approve the resolution adopting a total tax rate and Mr. Andres Sanchez will walk us through this.
Yes, there's a resolution attached to the agenda item, the third page, there's the resolution and has the budget that we have to show, and basically showing the approval. It's got a comparison, the property values of the average for last year with this year. And this tax rate that we're approving and the local maintenance, the general fund, the M and O tax rate, is decreasing taxes by fifty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents on the average value of a home compared to last year. The home this year, the average is eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Last year, the average was eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. After taking the twenty-five thousand dollar homestead exception that people have and the taxes they paid, this rate will save people about fifty-two dollars, so it is lower than last year. Lower and less taxes they have to pay.
I'll move to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime and a second for Mr. Gonzalez to approve the resolution adopting the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty total tax rate of one oh six eighty-seven on each a hundred dollars of assessed property and maintenance operations of one oh four eighty-seven and INS tax rate of point zero two. Correct? Any discussion?
Andres, at this rates that we have currently, we're pretty much at the lowest rates in the valley or who's, who's below us?
I don't know, I haven't checked. Because of the compression on the tax rate, eighty-five is rate went down, but we weren't the lowest.
Yeah, we weren't, I think in the past, only Port Isabel or South Padre Island has been lower than us.
That's the one.
Yeah, because they have additional funds to the royalties.
And only because of the property ritual.
In the future, if we wanted to raise that M and O tax rate, we had to have an audit. Whatever CPA we have hired to do the audit, they're supposed to do an audit to evaluate whether we really need to increase their tax rate. If we justify why we wanted, then we can do the, try to do approval.
That's near the legislation as well.
It's just gonna call for an election. The voters will have to approve any increase and the audit shows that it's okay, then they'll allow us to do it, otherwise they won't allow us to do it.
Could you provide it for, in an update for us?
Well, we'll do the research and provide an, an update.
Yeah, I want our public to know that, that we are, you know, maintaining at the lowest, our tax rate at the lowest possible and that only South Padre Island and only because they have so much property over there are able to, are under this.
Yes, yes.
Just a tax rate comparison to other districts.
Right. Yep. Okay. Alright, we have a motion by Dr. Jaime, a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, we're in a closed meeting to discuss, A, personal matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero seven four. Number one, employment of personnel. Number two, resignations. Number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero seven four and five-five-one point zero seven one. B, deliberation regarding the acquisition of real property, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero seven two. Item number C, contact level three grievance requested by M. Moreno pursuant to Wesco ISD policy DGPA local. D, consultation with attorney regarding, A, pending or contemplated litigation, B, settlement offer, C, no matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Wesco ISD under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct at the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero seven one. It is six-thirty and we'll be going into closed session.
Mr. President, I'm, I'm gonna recommend that you take closed session item C out of order and move that to the top of our closed session. The, the counsel for the board that is gonna sit with the board for the level three grievance is here, he's gonna take my spot here during the grievance.
Okay.
And that will allow me to go present with the administration and then we can go back in closed session to, where I can advise you on the remaining issues on the executive session agenda.
Okay. We have a recommendation by our attorney to conduct the level three grievance first, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Do it, I need a motion for that?
No, you're more present, you can change the order of the day.
Okay, changing the order of the day to, to the level three grievance first. Where to do it right now? Right now?
Before we start it.
Okay. It is nine-twenty and we're recovering an open meeting. Item eight, possible action necessary on items discussed in closed meeting. Number one, discussion of possible action on new employment. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, I recommend that you approve the new employment, the new employees as discussed in closed session.
So move. Second.
So we have a motion by Dr. Jaime and a second by Mr. Gonzalez to approve new employment, personnel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number two, discussion of possible action on resignations. Dr. Canales.
We recommend that you approve the resignations of certified personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move. So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime, and a second by Mr. Gonzalez, approve the resignations and present in the executive session. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number three, discussion of possible action on acquisition of real property, no action?
No action.
No action.
Okay. Item B, possible action on level-three grievance requested by M. Moreno pursuant to Wesco ISD policy DGPA local.
Mr. President, I make a motion, authorize superintendent and legal counsel to take action as discussed in closed session.
Second.